I'm here with, is it Lara? Is it had?
Yep.
Lara Bergman, who's running for District Six School Board. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So maybe we could start, you can just tell us a little bit about yourself and your background.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me. I love any chance I can to sort of share about me and my campaign. I'm a Minneapolis Public School graduate. I attended Minneapolis Public Schools all the way through high school, graduated from South in 2003. And now I am a Minneapolis Public School parent of two elementary aged kiddos. We live in the Armitage neighborhood where my kids attend school. And I'm also an early childhood educator that has spent my entire adult life working and serving, working with and serving children. So I started working in Head Start programs right out of college. Head Start is a federally funded early childhood program, serving families experiencing poverty. And then I was doing that out of state. And when I moved back to Minneapolis, I found myself working in a Montessori early childhood program near the University of Minnesota. And as a Montessori kid myself, I attended an early childhood Montessori program myself way back in the day. It kind of felt like a coming home. But one of the things that I quickly noticed was that the two experiences between Head Start and this Montessori program were very different. And the families and children that were able to access these programs looked very different. So ever since then, I've kind of been on a quest to, you know, bring together high quality early childhood experiences for the children who need them the most. The research shows how important that early childhood foundation is for later learning. And so, yeah, fast forward over 15 years. And I was working at the Department of Human Services, implementing some of the really historic early childhood wins that the 2023 legislative session in Minnesota gave us, like a wage scale for the early childhood workforce, looking at mixed delivery, meaning, you know, how can we best support our early childhood ecosystem from birth until five by using funds that we target for our public school programs, but then also for community-based providers, culturally relevant providers. And then in the midst of all this, you know, being a parent in Minneapolis Public Schools, I've been watching board meetings and seeing the challenges that we've faced already and that are still yet to come. And I just saw a lack of honest, transparent, courageous leadership. And because of my deep connection to this corner of the city, as well as, you know, a vision of, you know, building bridges across our city, how, you know, this isn't just about my kids at my school, but about all of our kids in Minneapolis Public Schools. I just felt really called to run in this moment. I never thought I would be running for elected office, but here I am 10 months later. And it has been the absolute joy and honor of a lifetime and really hoping to bring everything that I've heard from the community to the board and also bring, you know, my laser-focused commitment on getting our kids what they need. And then also potentially expanding what we're doing in early childhood in Minneapolis. I think that's a real opportunity that we have.
Okay, well, thank you. That was a lot. So let me try and summarize a little bit. So you kind of lobbied the 2023 legislator, you said, for some changes for early education in the schools. Is that right?
So I was, I was working, I was doing some advocacy work for early childhood during that session. I was parallel to that, also advocating for increased funding for public schools to close our special education and English language learner cross subsidies. So I was organizing parents, Minneapolis Public School parents. But then, like more professionally, I was doing some advocacy work for early childhood. And then the following year is when I started my work at the Department of Human Services to sort of see those early childhood things be implemented after the policy was passed.
Are you working at the Department of Human Services now or?
I'm not, no. I wrapped that up last spring and was off with my kids for the summer, but also full-time campaigning. And this fall, I've been subbing at the Montessori early childhood programs that I'm connected to just so that I can keep my schedule flexible. Running for office is a very demanding endeavor. So after Election Day, we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Okay, so in there, you mentioned that you started watching school board meetings. What kind of motivated you to, because I mean, for a lot of people, that's not super exciting. So what was the motivation there to start watching those?
Well, my, our family's first year in Minneapolis Public Schools was the year of the teachers' strike. And so because I'm an early childhood educator and it was a very historic vote, you know, 98% of teachers voted in favor of that strike. I wanted to do everything I could to advocate for what they were on the line for. And I quickly started asking questions about where the money comes from to our district. And that's when I learned about not only those cross subsidies that I mentioned, but also the fact that 20 years ago, Governor Palenti slashed funding to public education right around the same time that our charter school and open enrollment laws were really starting to have their effects on our public schools. And so it was, you know, for me, it was like, I'm always going to be asking questions about like, go upstream, like what's the cause of all of this? Because that is where I believe the solution also lies. And so I started attending and board meetings in person. But then meetings like the Finance Committee meeting are not recorded or livestreamed. So you have to go in person to those. And that finance piece is a pretty big mystery. And when we look at things like last year, we had a $110 million deficit as a district. Kind of the only way to get information about that is to attend those meetings in person. And it's just really important to me to understand how these all play together as well as, you know, just kind of, our board is our, they are our strategic stewards of our district. And so I, you know, despite all the challenges, I kind of wanted to understand where our leaders thought we were going. And I have experience on other nonprofit boards. And so I understand the importance of, you know, good governance. And so I don't know, I think that's one of the reasons that I feel called to run for this seat is because not everybody is interested in that. I really, really am, because this is sort of where the sausage gets made.
Well, there's certainly, I think, a lot of, and I'm a parent of two kids that have gone through the public schools. And maybe you can help me to understand what is causing the deficit? I mean, I hear about it, but I also hear like different amounts. And it doesn't, and I think there was a report that just came out that said it's like 85 million for this school year. So maybe you could just summarize a little bit. Where's the deficit? Is it because we have empty buildings? I've heard that, but I'm not very well educated on where that deficit is actually coming from.
Yeah, so every year, the board has to approve a balanced budget. So every year, our finance team at the district puts together a tool called the pro forma. It's not a budget document. It is just a tool to sort of project if we continue on with our expenditures and our revenue as they currently are, this is the five-year projections of where we'll be. And in that pro forma, they take into account things like enrollment. They look at census data about birth rates and what the size of our incoming kindergarten class will be. They look at, you know, they make some assumptions about what the increase of our contract negotiations will be. And so it's a very rough estimate of, you know, year by year for the next five years, kind of where we're headed. And hopefully, the board takes that and heeds the warnings of, you know, these huge deficits and makes adjustments to that budget that they pass.
If I can just jump in, I have heard or read that the, basically, the population in Minneapolis is either staying steady or possibly decreasing. Is that what the school board is planning for or are they?
The, I'm talking about the student population.
Right, so you said they gauge, they try and project how many people are going to be in kindergarten. And I, from what I recall, that the amount of money the schools get is based on the number of people in the classes, right? So where, what's the projection?
Yeah, so that is definitely one of the data points and why we are projected to continue to have our expenses outpace our revenue. You are correct that our, our main source of funding comes from the state in terms of per pupil funding. And so however many children we have in our schools determines how much revenue we're getting from the state through that general funding formula. We also get, you know, money because of our special education students, our ELL students, compensatory ed. Like it used to be called free and reduced lunch, but now everyone gets free lunch. So they calculate that still as well. But that main enrollment is a huge driver of, you know, what our budget looks like in Minneapolis. And in the same, you know, 20 years that we saw a slash to funding, we also saw a decline in our enrollment. We've lost about 20,000 students over the last 20 years in our district. And we have not made adjustments to our budget in terms of the buildings that we're maintaining. And so what we do have right now are at least a dozen or so half-empty elementary schools with space for twice as many kids. And so it not only district-wide is a deficit, but when you look at it school by school, we have a lot of schools that are down to bare bones programming. And it just, it's not a, it's not a thriving system. And so this $85 million number that you quote is, that's the projected deficit for this next year's budget that the board will be looking to close when they adopt the next year's budget in June. And the thing for me is even if we're able to find another $85 million to plug that gap, that's to maintain the system that we have right now. And it's not a thriving system. We have families that continue to leave because they're not getting the programming they need in these, you know, under-enrolled buildings. They're not getting the student supports they need. We have class sizes that are approaching 35, 40 kids in an elementary-aged classroom. And, you know, families are like, that's not going to work. Educators are saying that's not going to work. So we really do have sort of this issue of, you know, not being able to rebuild our schools and have the things that families are looking for. So that also contributes to our enrollment decline is families sort of living in Minneapolis, but opting out for programs where they feel like their students' needs are going to be met.
Yeah. Thank you. So just to ask a little bit about the dynamics of the race. I know, and I'm going to show my ignorance of the actual school board here because I know there's at-large, and I'm not sure how many at-large there are. And then you're running for District Six, and I'm not sure exactly how many districts there are. So how many people are actually on the full school board? And are the issues that, you know, for District Six different than the other districts? Or is it all kind of, they all have the same issues?
So there are nine people on our school board, which is the largest in the state. School boards typically have about seven, but about 15 years ago, Minneapolis moved from all seven board seats being citywide elections to having three be at-large or citywide, and then six geographic districts. And I believe they did that because they wanted to have representation from all parts of the city on the board. So while I'm running for the District Six seat, I'm going to be one of nine people on a board that is passing policies and budgets that are, you know, responsible for the entire city. It's really, I'm a liaison to the schools and voters in District Six, sort of. But I won't just be advocating for just District Six schools because there are, there are different challenges in different parts of our city. But, you know, it's really important that I listen to the other board directors and that they listen to me because we all are sort of the person that will be hearing from the people in our districts. And then we have to find ways to, you know, again, pass those policies and budgets that will, you know, meet the needs of our schools and our families across the city. And yeah, you know, in District Six, we are, you know, we've been seeing enrollment decline across the city for years and years. A lot of people like to say that it was because of the CDD or the redesign they did four years ago that we are seeing this enrollment decline. But we were actually losing students long before that. It's just the CDD is when we started losing families from District Six because we historically have been the more affluent schools. We have a lot of fundraising support from our communities. We have a lot of, you know, our housing, our tax base here is just more affluent and stable. And so when we started seeing District Six families leave for districts like Edina or Bloomington or Richfield or go to private schools, that's kind of when alarm bells started going off. But the truth is, we've been losing families for a lot longer than that. And it's just that the impact of this system kind of have finally reached this part of the city. And so that's, you know, kind of where we need to understand that, you know, what impacts one part of the city will impact the whole system. That's what being part of a system is.
So thanks for that expert. And I'm assuming, is this a paid position, school board or not?
Um, it, we get a stipend. Board directors get $20,000 a year to do the job, which is actually quite high for what other districts are paid across the state. Some districts are completely voluntary. And so, yeah, it's, we have a lot of board directors that do need to have full-time jobs though to make ends meet, even though in districts like Minneapolis, this could, this could absolutely fill someone's time, like a full-time job.
I would think so. So what would you say are your top three or four issues that you'd like to change or improve about the school system? Well, you've mentioned quite a few things, but maybe you can just sort of summarize your top priorities.
Well, my top priority is literacy. So as an early childhood educator, I know how foundational those skills are for all later learning, self-confidence, just your ability to interact with the world around you, express your ideas, think critically. And right now, less than half of our students in Minneapolis Public Schools are reading at grade level. And that has been true for a while now. There's even a greater.
Why would you attribute that to? Why?
Well, certainly, the past 10, 15 years or so, we've had a bogus curriculum that we've been using. The, it's called, it's called Benchmark, and it's actually a curriculum that is used by districts across the country. But everything kind of came to a head during the pandemic when, when parents who had been told all along that their kids were, you know, doing fine at school actually got to see in person like how their kids were being taught to read. And it was not based on what we call the science of reading, how, you know, this body of research knows that brains learn to read. And among other things, it lacks a really solid phonics instruction. And, you know, it is the really, like intentional sequential teaching of those foundational skills that leads to proficient readers. And right now, we have a curriculum that doesn't include that. A couple of years ago, during that same legislative session, our state mandated that all schools use an evidence-based curriculum, that we, that we moved to using that because they saw this as a crisis across the state and truly across the country. And so kind of trying to get ahead of that, Minneapolis started implementing pilot programs of just supplemental phonics instruction. And my second graders teacher last year said it's the first time in all her years in the district that they've had that, and it was amazing how fast the kids were catching on. So this isn't, this isn't that half of our kids have a diagnosable learning delay or disability like dyslexia or dysgraphia. This is that we're just not teaching the kids the foundational skills that they need. And so that has to be, to me, that has to be like our priority as a board. And, you know, we've failed a lot of students along the way. And so we have to have a plan for not just getting that curriculum in our K5, but remedial supports for students. We have to get our teachers trained and, you know, support them with coaches to implement the curriculum. And then, you know, for me, we, as a board, always need to be monitoring our, you know, the decisions that we make to make sure that they're having the intended impact. And we have got to see those literacy outcomes improve for students because that's just the foundation. I, a lot of times, people feel like we pit academics against the arts. And I'm an arts kid, so like I get that that's where people find their joy, their voice, their people. But if we don't get kids reading by third grade, it doesn't matter how many arts opportunities we give to them. Like they are not going to be able to navigate the world post-graduation. And it is just critical. It is, it is a fundamental, you know, right. And it's what families are expecting from when they send their kids to school, that their kids are going to learn how to read, right?
Right, so priority number one is literacy. And I wanted to mention, I did see that you were endorsed by the Minnesota Star Tribune. Is that right?
No, the strip is not doing endorsements this year, but they did publish an op-ed of someone who is, was vocally supporting me, so.
Oh, okay, so thanks for sending me straight there. And well, then the op-ed I read, you were, they were, they liked your prioritizing literacy, which we just talked about, good governance and financial sustainability. And I was wondering, maybe you could explain what those other two mean to you, good governance and financial stability?
Yeah, good governance means that, you know, the board as a whole has a really clear understanding of their role as a governance body. I know that this board has, you know, undertaken a lot of professional development to understand the difference between governance and management. We need to make sure that, you know, we are, you know, clearly directing the work of the superintendent in her team and not micromanaging it. You know, we, we need to have those big picture strategic visions in mind. And I think, you know, good governance also comes with really clear metrics of accountability, right? So if we say, here's our vision, like we have to have some ways to which to measure that that, that vision is being met. And I think the other, you know, good governance and good financial stewardship go hand in hand because it is the main job of a governance body to do policy work and fiscal oversight. And so we have to understand our role as, you know, we have to be asking good questions, right? When we get, when we get information and data from the superintendent, we have to know what to do with that data to inform our policies and our budget decision. So that's what I mean by good governance. And then the financial sustainability piece kind of goes back to that thing about, you know, we, we need to have a vision of how we are going to financially support this, this vision we have for our schools. And right now, you know, as a parent, I've been frustrated as boards continue to kick this can down the road and not make sort of incremental adjustments for our budget. So, you know, that we don't find ourselves having to do, you know, something really, really devastating, like, you know, how to right-size the district without the robust community engagement of how to do that successfully. And so, you know, it means that we are, we are looking at that pro forma and we are saying, we not only want to avoid that, we want to, how can we change the trajectory of it, right? And that includes, you know, a robust plan to advocate to our partners at the state for funding. That includes looking at our enrollment data and figuring out how to draw families back to the district and retain the families we have. And then that also means making the necessary cuts that, you know, in my, my opinion, are long overdue. Because with inflation and the increasing costs of things like salaries and benefits, those expenses are just going to continue to increase. And so we have to take a really hard look at if the way we're using our resources right now is really contributing to a thriving future.
So where do you see like potential cuts is happening? I mean, they wouldn't actually reduce the number of teachers, would they or?
Well, 80% of our budget goes towards salary and benefits. So, you know, like any billion-dollar business, that, that equals a lot of money right there. And, you know, it has to be, it can't be one-time cuts because those are just Band-Aids. We have to think about how we are making cuts that, you know, for the long run, don't continue to compound on themselves. And so I think that it's a really hard conversation to have when you talk about reducing the number of buildings or educators we have in this district. But those, those are our ongoing costs that will continue to increase. And so how we have that conversation is really important.
All right. As a parent, you know, I've listened to some of the stories my sons have told me as they come home from school and times I've been a little concerned about what they're being taught. And I just wondered what would be your recommendation for how parents might communicate their concerns about those, you know, whether it's the books they're having to read or how they're being taught to read or any of those things? Do the parents go to the school board or how do they get their voices heard?
Yeah, I mean, as an educator myself, I've navigated a lot of, you know, parent concerns. And I really do think the best place to start is connecting with the classroom teacher. And, you know, I, for me, I always try to lead from curiosity and not judgment, right? So, you know, hopefully, parents and educators can come to that conversation and have a really honest conversation about that. But, you know, there's kind of this like chain that you work your way up, right? If you're unsatisfied with what you get from a classroom teacher, you can bring in the principal. And then the school board is, I think that, I hope if I'm elected, that I do hear from parents, both the good and the bad, because I need to understand what's happening on the ground. Um, because I need to understand what's happening on the ground. But um, in terms of being able to. Implement any changes, um, that, you know, that is not the work of the board. And that's where that governance versus management really um, comes into play. Um, but certainly if parents feel like their concerns are not being met, um, at each of those other levels. You know, like, just trying to connect parents with the right people that can address those concerns is absolutely a job of the board. Um, though I personally can't tell you, you know, oh, I'm I'm gonna fix that for you because again, I'm one. Head of nine on on the body that is the school board, but I certainly can be an advocate for relaying. Any concerns parents have. Um, and we saw that actually last year, a group of parents of um. Non-binary transgender queer students got together because they felt like their concerns hadn't been heeded by their different school communities and that. You know, they elevated it to, to the point where the district, the board adopted a gender inclusion policy. That um, to hold our schools accountable to making sure that, you know, we are serving all children. Um, so that, you know, that's an example of how that could work with the board, but. I definitely think that, you know, through relationship with your classroom teacher, the school principal. That's, that's where you'll get your, hopefully get your, your questions answered most quickly. Um, and.
So I'm curious like um. Oh, I I mean, it feel like one of the debates in education is um, you know, how much. Uh, teachers like ha- how much control they have over the curriculum they get to teach in their school or in their classroom, right? Like, I've heard quite frequently about whether it's federal or state, like mandates and things they have to teach. And um, maybe teachers wanting to have more freedom, is that uh? Is that still a big kind of concern of teachers or how do you view that issue?
Yeah, I mean, definitely, um, our teachers are professionals, like they, you know. This is their expertise that they have and I, I, I have a lot of educators that are. Supporting me in this campaign that have shared stories of, you know, whether it's, you know, the professional development. That the district tells them they must do and it doesn't end up actually, you know, impacting their practice and they feel like. There was better ways to use that time. Um, the curriculum that, you know, teachers are given, I've heard. You know, every few years we're switching up the curriculum and that's hard because you gotta adjust and, you know, it, it's, it's a lot of work. Um, so I think there has to be a lot of listening to our educators and I think. As a culture in Minneapolis Public Schools, we can do better at that and bringing educators to the table while we're making these decisions. Um, because, you know, at the end of the day. Um, the state and federal mandates, even the school board doesn't have control over. But it does matter that we are working in partnership with the folks that are going to be, you know, implementing those mandates. Um, that, that we do as much as we can to, to support them and, and hear from them about how to do that successfully.
Okay, so it 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 just made me um, think a little bit like there's, you know, there's quite a few. Elements, I guess, that make up our school system and. Obviously, there's the parents and and the students and whether or not they're staying in the schools because they're happy. There's the teachers, um, there's school administrators and then the. Superintendent and that administrative body, there's the school board. And then there's the teachers' union. So it it, there's a lot, it seems like there's just a lot of. Uh, voices at play there. How does the union fit into all of this in terms of? Do they have influence on the school board or the superintendent or they just? Really just kind of lobbying for salaries and benefits, uh, you know, I don't, I don't really know enough about. Where they fit into the equation.
Yeah, well, we're definitely wading into some contentious territory here because. My opponent is the former head of the teachers' union and um, some people think that. Would be a really great thing to have as part of the school board and others are very concerned about that on the school board. Um, the union, yeah, again, they represent their membership. Um, and we've heard that, you know, teacher working conditions are student learning conditions. And there is a lot of truth to that. As an educator, I understand that. At the end of the day, though, some of the decisions that the board has to make have to be with the students in mind first. And that might not always align with what the union wants. That being said, again. We have had a culture for so long in Minneapolis Public Schools where we um. It has been a, a tension between the teachers' union and district leadership and school board. Because um, they are very complex problems that we're trying to address. At the end of the day, we want strong schools that are supporting our kids and then there are just different um. Perspectives of how we do that. Um, I think we can, we, it is possible for the future of our district to have a better. Relationship between those three entities like we see in other districts across the state, right? It doesn't have to be so adversarial. Um, but that requires a lot of trust and demonstrating that we are listening. Um, and then, you know, the, the contract negotiations with the teachers' union. There, there is a lot written into that contract that does sort of have an impact on how. We do business in Minneapolis Public Schools, whether that's, you know, trying to retain our younger teachers of color. Or um, uh, the hiring process um, every year for schools and, you know. Trying to figure out how we can staff our um, high-poverty schools where we see the most teacher vacancies and turnover. You know, those sorts of things have to be negotiated with our district uh, or with our union leadership. Um, and so that's where they do have, the union does have some power and some say. Um, and, you know, I hope that in the future, we, all parties can come to the table and really. Um, center the students in figuring out how to, how to get that done.
So, I, I'm. You obviously know all the details here, I do not. And so what I don't, so. Are, do we, does teachers have a contract right now? And wh- when does that go to?
Next year.
Okay, so I guess next year they'll wanna negotiate the contract, right? So how does it work? The union puts forward the contract. And the school board has to agree to it or the superintendent has to agree to that?
So the um, the school district has a negotiation team. Again, the school board. Um, we sort of give the high-level. Uh, objectives that we have, you know, let's say it's a priority to. You know, staff our high-poverty schools, right? So that's the objective and then it's up to the superintendent and her negotiation team. To um, make that happen, right? And it, it often, the big topic is always salaries. And benefits for teachers during contract negotiations for, for good reason, right? We wanna make sure we have a, a supported uh, workforce uh, that are, you know, contributing to our strong schools. Um, and there is, it's usually months and months of back and forth. Um, this last round of negotiations started in the fall and I, you know, those are recorded. And you can go in person or you can watch them online and I did watch sort of how that, how that works and. Um, yeah, and then that went all the way through. The spring when they finally came to an agreement. So it's a lot of back and forth of sort of proposals, counter-proposals. And it could be everything from salaries to um, the steps and lanes in our s- salary schedule, the. Requirements around professional development days, the calendar, class size targets, um. Mental health supports, you know, that contract can, can basically have anything in it. It's just up to the negotiation team for the district and then the union's negotiation team to figure that out. But the school board, the school board ultimately approves all contracts.
Oh, it does, okay.
That's, you know, but we're not, we're not. As a board at every meeting, um, we, that's where, you know, trusting our superintendent. And her team to represent us well is really important. Um, and uh.
And, and the school board, like, cause I know the superintendent is fairly new, right? She was hired like maybe last year?
In February, yeah.
Oh, February of this year, okay. Um, and so is it up to the school board to choose the superintendent?
Yes, yep, that, that's also a job of the school board that just, that's not like a yearly thing.
Yeah.
It's a pretty big thing to undertake uh, the process of hiring a superintendent. Um, but we do, you know, technically she's our only employee and so it's up to us to monitor. Her performance and um, you know, I think that. Um, Dr. Sales Adams, our new superintendent, was definitely handed a full plate right in the middle of the. Contract negotiations and a hundred million dollar deficit with our budget and, you know, looming um. School transformation conversation, so she's been handed a strong, a, 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 a full plate and needs a strong board. To really partner with, um, be in constant communication about where we're going together so that um. That we have that cohesion as a district. Cause at the end of the day, I think whether it's. The teachers' union or the board or the district administration, like what parents see, what the community sees is just Minneapolis Public Schools. Right? And we're all kind of responsible for, for creating that vision together.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's so right, I mean, um, and I'd be interested to hear, I know you're, you've been doing a lot of campaigning, door-knocking. I'd love to hear kind of what feedback, what the, the top concerns are of the people when you're standing on their doors. Because, you know, as a parent, uh, you know, I just, I, I know either like my son's class is. Too crowded or he, he, you know, he feels like whatever the curriculum is boring or, you know. All, you know, I just hear from his perspective, but I don't know, you know. All the factors that really contribute to like, well, why is the class too crowded or, you know, why, I don't know why they don't have shop or. You know, all those things, like I don't know how it gets there, I just kinda see the end result, so. I'm curious, as you're door-knocking, what some of the questions you're hearing from parents?
Yeah, they vary widely because I think one of the things about, that I've learned about running for this hyper-local seat. Right? It's not even a citywide seat, it's one corner of the city. Um, and, but it's important. You know, it's important that folks understand what's going on with the school board. And I completely understand as a parent of two young children, why attending board meetings and navigating all of the agendas and notes. On our website is not, is not a realistic way to get that information. So a- another thing that I'm running on is we have got to be engaging the community in new and better ways. Because we, we do have a lot of challenges and we have to demystify how we got to this moment and really seek. The engagement of the community to address those issues. Um, I would say that on the doors, I'm hearing. People are really concerned about our budget and not seeing leadership. You know, make any plans to avoid, you know, worst-case scenario is, you know, statutory operating debt or the state of Minnesota. You know, we get to a certain level in our fund balance as a district and that will automatically trigger. You know, the state coming in and basically cleaning house, so, you know. There are people who are aware of that and they want to see leaders taking decisive action to, you know, avoid that. Um, but then there's also folks that just don't even know who their school board director is and, you know. I need to meet them where they're at too because um, they're. The school board does make some really big decisions that most immediately impact our communities and our kids, whether that's curriculum. Or budgets or um, class sizes or things like that, right? So um, I'm definitely hearing about class sizes a lot this year too and that's because. While we have half-full buildings, we have some with huge class sizes and that's because there's just not enough revenue in a building. Um, enough kids in a building to, you know, get that next, that, that extra section. Um, to reduce those class sizes across the grade level. Um, but I'm also hearing about people who are concerned about. The inequities in our district, right? And how can we really unify as, as a. Minneapolis Public Schools and not these different corners of the district. Um, and then. I guess finally I just, people, people want to know that um. Their kids are gonna get what they need, whether that's advanced coursework or special education services. Or arts programming or, you know, literacy, a, a strong literacy curriculum. Um, at the end of the day, parents especially just wanna know that their kids are gonna get a good experience in our schools and they don't. They're not really interested in, in getting bogged down with the details of how that happens. That's just, that's what they want to be at the end of the day and so. I think the board has a role to play in not only um, to sort of. Getting out in the community, explaining the decisions that we make, but also just creating. A culture in Minneapolis where we're celebrating the really amazing things that are happening too alongside our challenges, right? Like we, I've heard some, about some really cool programs from different people, from different school communities that I didn't even know about. And, you know, it's truly like, really, really exciting to hear about some of the things that are happening in our schools right now.
Right. So uh, you mentioned that um, you know, this, the school board does play a part in the curriculum and that. Um, you know, parents just want their kids to have a good experience and I think what makes. The, the schools kind of a, a flashpoint in our culture is that how you define that good experience is different, right? By, by person. And so I know it's been, and I don't think this is really an issue in Minneapolis. But tell me if I'm wrong. Um, you know, things like book bannings and school board overreach. And stuff or, or where, you know, we've seen, yeah, school boards come in and ban certain books and libraries. Is anything that's not really happening in Minneapolis, right, or?
There's no book bans happening in Minneapolis Public Schools, you know, we have actually. Been fortunate, uh, because that, that has, like, people have taken over board meetings in. Nearby suburban districts to, to advocate for book banning and um, so, you know, one thing I'll. Say is, in Minneapolis and I, this is from growing up here, going to schools here, like. Our, our diversity and sort of our inclusiveness of all different kinds of folks um, is one of our strengths. Um, and it's just, we can't just rest on our laurels and just say, well, that's just who we are as Minneapolis. Like, for example, the gender inclusion policy I mentioned, we didn't have a gender inclusion policy on the books. Like surrounding districts do, so like that was really, really important that we get that into our policy officially, into our policy. So that um, we're being proactive and, and not waiting for that crisis moment. And you know, in terms of banning books, I, I just, I feel this even as an early childhood educator. Um, books are windows to the world for our children, we need, it is critical that we have books that. Not only reflect the student population that we have in Minneapolis Public Schools, which is incredibly diverse, whether it's. Racially, linguistically, religion, um, gender, you know, like so many, so many beautiful. Beautiful children in our schools that need to see themselves reflected in our, in our books, but. There's also so much more of the world that books can bring into, to our classroom and. So, you know, I have a special appreciation for our librarians that are sort of. They are making sure that we, we have those books in our schools. And um, that children have access to them, that, you know, we have amazing teachers that are bringing in. Books, my, my now third grader was telling me about a book they read the other uh week about Rosa Parks. On uh, on the bus and how her teacher then was talking about, you know, the difference between jail and prison. And, and you know, like, this is for a third grader. And I like, for me as a parent, that's exciting. Because I didn't necessarily get that all the time and I had to learn that later in life as an adult, right? And it's just, um, it's just really, to me, it's one of our strengths as a district. But we have to protect it. We have to make sure we're being proactive, um, because it's getting too close for comfort.
Yeah, I mean, I, personally, I wish um. You know, there was more controversy over books because it would show that students are actually reading them and thinking about them. You know, cause there, there's actually like quite. You know, as computers and stuff start taking over libraries and there's not as many books in general in them. And then obviously all of our kids are um, when you were speaking, I was just like, well, yeah, people are worried about books. But, you know, our kids get a lot of their influence from TikTok and YouTube and stuff like that. Uh, where do you stand on like um phones in the schools? I'm sure you've probably been asked that question by parents and stuff.
Yeah, that has been some people's like top issue. And in Minneapolis Public School, so there's a law that by next year, every district has to have a cell phone policy. Um, but turns out Minneapolis passed a pretty good policy about ten years ago and this year they're actually implementing it. They're actually like sharing at the beginning of the school year with parents. Like, this is our, these are our parameters for, for phones in schools. And I'm hearing a lot of really great things from parents and educators about, you know, how it's been really effective. And, you know, the research is pretty clear about the impact of, of screens. Um, and social media on, on our students developing brains. And I think it's really important that um. That we are teaching our children how to use things like cell phones as tools. You know, just like when I was back in elementary school and computers were becoming a thing, right? Like, we were taught in school like how to use them appropriately, right? Like, any new tool um has its good things and its bad things. And if we just, if we're not addressing it with students like, and just leaving it up to chance, like, yeah, they're gonna. They're gonna start probably wading into territory that is not um, it's not healthy for them. But um, yeah, I, I definitely think what Minneapolis is going on this year is a lot better than it has been. And um, like anything, we have to just keep monitoring it and making sure.
So what is the policy that they are gonna be implementing? Or should I just wait until they send home a, a notice?
They are implementing it. They, they sent it out um, at the beginning of the year. Is, is sort of like by different level, like what, I'm not gonna be able to say it verbatim to you right now. But um, uh, it's, you know, for under fifth grade, like no phones, no smartwatches. Unless there's a specific, you know, case like a medical condition or, I don't know, right? And then middle school, it's a little more like kids can have them, but only at the beginning and end of the day or something. And then they have to be stowed for the rest of the day or whatever. And then high school, um, you know, maybe they can have it at lunch too. But I've heard of a lot of classrooms like implementing, um, and this is probably for the older grades. Like other pocket systems where when kids walk into a classroom, they put their kids like on one of those shoe organizers, right? So it's not even within reach um, or some sort of, you know, box that they check in and out. Um, and so, yeah, I think just the. The tendency for kids to just constantly be on their phones if they're within reach, just removing that. Is made a really positive influence on, on our learning environments.
Yeah, those darn kids, us adults don't have that problem.
I know, that's the thing too, right? We, we have fully formed adult brains and we still have an issue with our, our technology and our phone. So I think again, that's where it's like, I'm not, I'm not a fan of like punitive measures when children are still learning, right? We have to find ways to um, teach them responsibility and, and how to use the tools responsibly. And not just punish them, punishing them for not knowing, right?
So I probably should have asked this earlier. I uh, I wanted to give you a chance to um. Talk about the, the twenty million dollar um, IT. Uh, proposal that's out there. I've um, you know, I've heard people supporting it and other people questioning it. And I'm not really sure how I should vote. So can you tell me how I should vote and why?
Well, so this actually comes down to a state law. Where, you know, the state will provide a certain number of funds, certain percentage of funds. And just the way we have it set up that local districts uh or cities are also a responsibility for showing that they're chipping in as well. And so we have an opportunity this election to um, technically repeal a levy that we've already approved. As voters and then implement uh or adopt a new one that is an increase of twenty million dollars of a levy. But the Minneapolis Public Schools will uh designate that twenty million dollar increase. To paying for the tech that we currently pay for out of our general fund. So it's essentially just creating a designated bucket for those things. And then freeing up some money from our general fund, which is where things like our teacher salaries come from. Or um, investing in new programming comes from. So it's not, it's not um, increasing our tech in Minneapolis Public Schools. It's just creating a designated bucket to pay for what we already have and pay for from a different bucket. Um, and, you know, I'll say that I've encountered folks that are like, I will say yes to getting our schools as much money as possible. Always without question. And then, yes, some folks that are more skeptical because what they see is. Pouring water into an, a leaky bucket, right? Like, we as a school district have to be better stewards of our public tax dollars. We have to demonstrate that we are making responsible financial decisions that are actually improving our student experiences and outcomes. That means we have to have accountability. We have to demonstrate that we are providing a world-class education. We are moving the needle on those test scores as imperfect as they might be. We are retaining families and teachers and, you know, we are, you know, having, keeping class sizes. To the levels that are, you know, tenable for, for learning. And um, we haven't done a very good job of that. We've kind of taken it for granted. And so that's where I will always be advocating for more money for our schools. But then same flip side of that is that we are demonstrating to the community that we are accountable to how we're using that.
So I should vote for it?
You know, here's the thing, depriving our schools of funds right now isn't gonna set us up for success either. Um, and it's, this twenty million dollars is just a part of what needs to be a multifaceted plan to get our district on track. Um, but that would be twenty million dollars year after year that we could count on um, and.
But so, and so I understand it's twenty million more than the current tech budget, right? So what's, no.
It's just designating twenty million dollars for technology. So it will create a bucket of money that we use to pay for all of our tech, whether that's devices, IT support. Subscriptions to, you know, different, the different learning apps. Um, that we are currently paying, let's say twenty million dollars out of our general fund for. So, yeah, it's not, it's not new tech, it's just freeing up some money from our general fund.
Well, thank you for explaining that to me and taking the time to talk to me. Um, are there any topics or issues that uh we haven't covered today that you wanted to make sure people hear about?
I don't think so. This was pretty, this was pretty good.
Yeah, we covered a lot of ground.
Yeah, I appreciate your questions. Um, yeah, I'll just say that, again, I never thought I'd be running for elected office, but one of the things I hope. That voters see and that should I be elected, that they can count on seeing me out in the community. And responding to emails and phone calls, being proactive in my outreach and doing what I can to be available. Because the way we are gonna rebuild trust in this district is by showing up and, and listening and following through. And it seems pretty simple, but it's something we've been missing in Minneapolis. So I'm really excited to be able to bring that to, to this seat and to this district.
All right, well, great. Thank you for uh educating me today and uh best of luck out there. And I hope you uh feel better.
Thank you. Thanks, Terry.
All right, bye.